Good morning, everybody, afternoon. Welcome to the City of Cheyenne Council Work Session for May sixteenth. Today we have a city attorney, human resources, IT and compliance. The last day before we go into committee the whole next week. And with that, we will start with our city attorney, Ms. Boster.
Good morning, Stephanie Boster, Cheyenne City Attorney, and I have with me my deputy city attorney, John Brody. And our budget's pretty short, so I think I'll go through it line by line. We do have a requested increase. The total amount of the increase is eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. The bulk of my budget and the bulk of that increase is actually personnel. The first line, I'm the division manager. I also have five employees. I am fully staffed, which is the first time this office has been fully staffed. Since city council gave us that additional attorney position. So all of my positions are currently filled. You all probably know my office manager, Joe Jordan. I also have the new city prosecutor as of about a month and a half ago is Monique McBride. She's an experienced attorney. She used to be with the DA's office. She brings with her thirty years of experience, most of that as a prosecutor. And then I also have a legal assistant who assists her on the criminal side. And finally, I've got a new attorney, Travis Shirtlift, who fills a position that the city council gave to us three years ago when Mike O'Donnell was the city attorney. So those individuals are under regular employees, and that's the bulk of the increase. That increases forty-six thousand dollars and all of that goes to salaries. I compete directly with the AG's office at any given time. I can lose any employee to the AG's office or I can lose them to private practice. So to keep stability within this office, I've kept salaries at rate requirements. So that's the forty-six thousand. The rest of it is personnel matters, and I really have no control over those. The rest of the office is increased by eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And professional development is where we pay for the state bar conference every year for our four attorneys to attend. That conference is held in Cheyenne next year. So I don't have in September, actually. So I don't have any pay for rooms or travel or anything like that. That's just straight conference fees. The next line item is dues and subscription. The city attorney's office has a subscription to Westlaw. We've got seven licenses, two of those go to the municipal court. And then another one goes to the mayor's office for the public defender. So there's seven total licenses. That's an online legal research search engine. Under that fee, we also pay for books and other organizations. We belong to the IMLA, which is the International Municipal Lawyers Association. That provides resources to us. Let's see, our advertising is budget is the same. We're also in an attempt to assist the compliance department, and you'll hear from them later. We have not budgeted in the past for court filing fees. But what we'd like to do in congruence with the compliance department is start really enforcing our code. And to do that, we need to be able to file in court and and have the types of fees that we need to file liens against entities. If we bring a complaint in district court, just so you know, that's a hundred and sixty dollar filing fee. Circuit Court is seventy dollars, and we haven't currently budgeted for that. This budget has an increase to account for that. And then our office supply budget is is the same as before. Our office is requesting that we replace four laptops. Our laptops are really starting to break down. That's within the four-year replacement fee. But apart from that, that's our budget, and I'm available for any questions.
Councilman Reubel.
Chairman, through you. As far as with your legal or with your law licenses, are you required to take continuing education?
Mr. Chairman, through you, we are. That's why we're paying for the state bar conference. As attorneys, all four of us are required to keep up our law licenses, which is, I think it's what fourteen CLE credit hours, including one hour of ethics CLE. So that's how I account for it. The cheapest way for us to account for those is the state bar conference.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Okay, so it's going to be multifaceted. So so first of all, and I know our spatial analysis has not been returned yet. But so would your office, if this, when the spatial analysis comes back, would your office be better served in the courthouse? Or here at City Hall?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I really have two separate divisions, criminal and civil. The civil office is here in this building next to the mayor's office. I think that's an appropriate place for it. I do appreciate having access to the mayor's office. Our criminal side is actually housed at the police department. And I think that's appropriate location for our city prosecutor because she's able to coordinate with law enforcement. We don't have any offices right now at the municipal court. That changed about a month and a half ago. But I feel really comfortable with the prosecutor at the police department. I don't believe we need space at the municipal court.
Okay, so kind of segueing off that, one of the conversations that we learned through the Public Works debate was in regards to a four-hour work or forty-hour work week where it would be four tens instead of five eights. So can you think of any experience, like would this benefit your office? If, because I know a mayoral candidate in twenty sixteen brought up to, you know, basically change the whole entire city dynamic to four tens. So would that actually work with your office?
Mr. Chairman, through you, on the criminal side, that wouldn't work. We have courts of four days, four or five days a week, actually five days a week. For statute, the court is actually supposed to be open on Saturdays. So we couldn't do four tens on the criminal side because we need to be available if the court is open. On the civil side, I think it'd be difficult to do four tens.
Okay, so going back into what Judge Ross said a couple of days ago in regards to, you know, that they kind of float that fine line between statute in regards to their type of court. So the way you're stating that they have to be open five days a week and potentially Saturdays, and that's under state court or state statute?
Mr. Chairman, through you, that is required under the municipal court statutes.
So at no point should I ever see the courthouse closed for any reason?
Mr. Chairman, through you, it can be closed on Sunday. That's appropriate.
But that's it?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody was actually to walk up the door and it was locked and no one was there, say on a random Thursday or Friday, that would not be acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, through you, that's correct. That'd be a violation of state statute.
Okay, thank you. Councilman White. See your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Yes. Okay, so Mr. President, through you, to Stephanie. I see a decrease. A slight decrease because of reduction of summer internships. Is that something that you're no longer doing? I thought the summer internships was of some value to your office. Just kind of wanted to get your response to that.
Mr. Chairman, through you, that's correct. We've had a summer intern for the last two years. But we no longer have room to house a summer intern because I filled that final position. So I've taken that out of my budget for that reason.
Okay, that's the point. I hope you can find some space in the future because I know you probably use the help, even though it's only for a short time period. No further questions.
Hey. Looks like you're off the hook now.
Thank you.
Short and sweet. Okay. Thank you. So next we have human resources and Director Haas.
Good afternoon, Darren Haas, Human Resources. I'm gonna I'm gonna talk about if I can, the four, the four big increases that we have. And there's only
Can you tell us our page number, please?
I'm sorry, one oh two, one oh three. Give you a minute to flip there. So the first Oh, sorry. The first expense I want to talk about is the payroll. That's an increase of nearly thirty-five thousand. And those are due to the the cost of living adjustments, the step increases that we've incurred and that will incur come July one. And then the the next three expenses are all under the contractual side. The first one and the largest one is a ten thousand dollar request to begin an employee referral program. Well, seventeen percent of our employees now hired are coming from employee referrals. We think that could even be higher if we can incentivize our employees to to encourage their friends, family, neighbors, share the, share the opening positions we have. Fortunately, we only have thirteen openings right now full-time. So but this, this program, the police, has been very successful with their referral program, getting police officers. So we'd like to incorporate this referral program. The second one is a employee mentorship program. This is something we've been working on for a few years. We'd like to, that's seven, that's seven thousand dollars. We'd like to provide an opportunity for an employee that may want to change their, maybe a department. Maybe they want to look at some growth potential. Well, we'd love to promote from within, and this will help us provide that avenue. Just an example, we have a, maybe a sanitation worker says, I'm, you know, I'm tired of the sanitation. I'd like to see what it's like to get in, maybe I'm going to consider getting into planning or a building inspection or code enforcement. We would assign them through this mentorship program, we'll get them assigned with a mentor. We'll even help pick up maybe a couple of classes, the L triple C, to kind of give them some exposure of what that might look like with the training that would apply to that position. So, you know, it's a combination of possible succession planning, some growth from within, promotions from within. We have our best successes when we grow them from, from the ground up. So that's what that mentorship program is. And the third big cost is we're asking seventy, an additional seventy-five hundred dollars for the employee events program. That's our bowling, golf, the summer picnic, Christmas party and the annual post-holiday luncheon. And that's, that's all, it's really driven by food costs. The food costs is just, as we all know, have gone up tremendously. So we were at the Christmas party, we were short funded to, at the, at the at the office, we were, we ran really short during the January holiday party. Culvers really helped us and actually took a loss to provide for us this year. So we, we need to increase those food costs this year. So those are, those are my ask, there's a fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars. And it's really, again, payroll, the employee referral program, the mentorship, and then the city events, employee events. So I'll open that up for questions then.
Councilman Johnson.
Going to your, your referral program. One of the things that's come up from staff that has been addressed to me, and I talked with the city treasurer about this because we only have one tax ID number. And so if they accrue their hours at, say, one division, and then they want to actually, you know, do other work in other departments, like, you know, for example, you know, say they're like in sanitation and all of a sudden they want to work at the civic center. But basically, all of a sudden, they're forty hours here. And so the way, because we have the tax ID number, the way it was explained to me is that any hours that they accrue as a staff member at the civic center can be classified as overtime because of the tax ID number that really doesn't mesh really well with the two departments because of the way that the payroll system works. So I know a lot of employees have actually wanted to kind of take on secondary jobs, but as a city employee. So have we discussed on exactly how it can work that they can still do their forty-hour over, or forty-time, or forty-hour work week with their regular job, but then actually take on a part-time position with the tax ID number? So they can actually still get paid without having to volunteer, you know, their hours just because they're passionate about working with a different department in the city?
I, to you.
Director.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson. No, we, we can, we can do this with a non-exempt employee. They can, they can clock in forty hours in one department, twenty hours in another. That, that, the department where they clock in after the fortieth hour will hit, they'll be the ones that hit the overtime. Right, but an exempt staff, we, we've, we've had requests from exempt staff to, they want to pick up, maybe do some event security over at the civic center. There's, I haven't found a way through federal labor standards how to pay them when they're exempt staff, even though there's two separate entities, tax ID numbers, I'm not sure how we've, we've never come, come up with a way with that. On, on, on the mentorship program, I know if we, if we have somebody that would like to shadow planning, we would try to incorporate that during their work week. So there wouldn't be any, putting anybody overtime. We schedule them thirty-two hours in sanitation and come over eight hours and maybe follow Seth Lloyd around.
Yeah, because now that you brought that up in regards to the, the federal labor standards and everything, I think that's where it came back to the tax ID number that we really couldn't, you know, without filing for an additional tax ID number for this. I just know that, you know, some areas, you know, that require or, you know, need the staffing, and we have people that already work for us and just that it's automatically an inhibitor because of that federal, it really came down, I think, to the tax ID numbers. And like you said, with the Labor Standards Act, that they couldn't do it as an exempt employee. So I don't know how we can work around that because I know there's a lot of people out there that would really like to take on an additional position with the city, but this is an inhibitor for them.
I would love to find a way to, sir.
Here you go. So you know other questions on the people that are here and nothing from Councilman White? What, Director, what's the percentage of employers, employees that are in the wellness program or staying fully active in that wellness program?
Two, two years ago, we had twenty-three that participated. Last year, we had twenty-six. This year, we're up to fifty-seven, and we still have two months to go. Wellness is, we have a great push right now on wellness.
Yeah.
A huge, so the thanks to you all help support that.
Did have a follow-up. So going back pre-pandemic, I know that you guys had that Cheyenne University that was kind of trying to incentivize further education with, like you said, if somebody was to mimic, you know, Seth, you know, falling around to kind of, you know, educate, you know, other staff members that may want to benefit from, you know, his experience in other departments. So is that kind of what, did we just rebrand it as mentorship? Or is, is the Cheyenne University something that was completely different from the mentorship?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, this might be a small piece of that Cheyenne U. And I can't tell you, the mayor and I have had lots of conversations and I, hopefully that might be the next position. We can approve next year as I bring it back to Cheyenne U. There's a lot of value in training, providing education for our staff, help do through root cause analysis and the retraining, rebranding. So this is, this is a portion of it, and I can't see this mentorship wrapping up into that if we're able to get that Cheyenne U kick back off.
Okay, seeing nothing else, that was short and sweet. We'll move on to, Mr. IT, are you up next, Eric?
I don't think so.
Wishful thinking. Oh, okay. Oh, so we'll start with IT. We're going to be on page. Please turn to page one hundred and ten, one hundred and eleven.
Love the tie, matches the socks, looking good, Director Fowden.
You know, I caught, I caught a lot of flack for that this morning. Everybody was like, hey, this guy hasn't looked like this in a while. But I thought what a wonderful opportunity. I don't get to visit with you folks very often like this in a, in a large group. And so I gotta go back to the old ways a little bit. But I was also told not to do this again because you'd cut my budget. You'd think we've got too much money in there. So I'm a little cognitive of both.
We're more used to the look in the human resources picture.
Yeah. Well, when you're cleaning up homeless camps, you don't want to wear those shoes out there and ties don't help, they get in the way. So understand that.
Yeah, we understand you really have increased your department over the past couple of years. So great to hear about it.
All right, well, thank you, folks, so much. I guess I'd like to start with a couple of things. One, and that is thanking Treasurer Lockman and her entire staff. For my department, we begin our budget process clear back in October, really taking a close look at it every single week and kind of where are we at with our funding, where are we at with our projects? Because most of our work within the compliance department really comes out during the budget and therefore after the budget because of the summertime. So we're very cognitive of that. And when she gives us those quarterly reports, that's kind of our indicator telling us where we need to be, where our funding should be, what we should be looking at in terms of staffing and what's coming down the pipe in the community. We also monitor the community in terms of foreclosures and where those conversations are at. We look at the reports that are put out by local credit unions in terms of what they're seeing on the sides of repossession and those things. Those are indicators for us in terms of where the economy is at and what that looks like for our department. But we could not, my director, Deputy Director here, Marilyn Sutherland and myself, we could not do our department without the treasury support and an understanding of where the financials are really at. So I wanted to take that opportunity and thank her. I also wanted to thank the mayor and all of you for your support. This is our fifth budget time as a department. This is my eighth budget going through it with the council. And this is the very first time in five years that we are not taking on a new division into this department. We are staying within the nomenclature that we have designed and and committed to. And so what we've tried to do is take a look at what we have before us and be the very best at that. And so I thank all of you for giving us that funding and for understanding our needs for the operation. We look at information technology, there's not a lot of change to the budget there. If you take a look at what has been historically put before you since the budget shows from twenty twenty through two up to the new request in twenty twenty-five, you only see the slight reduction of the fifty-two thousand, that was one-time money. But you did leave us whole with the forty thousand so that we could continue with those projects and in terms of network development. When we talk about network development, this year had some large challenges and some great projects for us to bring forward. We had the three new fire stations that were brought online. We have the beast facility that we had the wonderful opportunity to bring online and bring into our operations of standards. And then we rehomed and relocated the animal control, again, with your guys' support. But that needed some infrastructure, it needed some CAT six, it needed to have some towers, it needed to have the network availability there and the reliability through the fiber opportunities. And so tethering all those pieces together really come from Dustin and Tyler and their team, and they do a phenomenal job of delivering those services. I had a great opportunity to visit with Dustin and Tyler, and I think there's a little bit of confusion in terms of what IT does and what they actually do for us. And they've done a great job of pulling all of those fiber opportunities, pulling together the ability to have one tower locate the fire department, being able to ping off of something like at the Botanic Gardens that would then feed another location such as weed and pest. And you're getting that from your IT division. There is some confusion, and folks believe that they're more of the program side of things. So when we acquired the Open Gov opportunity, you have to migrate software and and information from the Harris opportunity into that. But that is not what your IT department does. They can assist in that, but they're not part of the conversation in terms of the development of that and how those pieces work together. And so when you look at IT, these folks are meeting the achievability and what you're setting forth for them to do every single day. If you were looking for a program analyst or someone to do program design or program networking in between, that's a whole different position, and it's a costly position. And so what we've done here has been able to capture the day-to-day operations. And then with the funding that you guys have provided, you've been able to move us in the right direction versus staying static, if you will, and continue to operate through the IT services that way. So we had a period of time when we didn't have those fundings, we do now, and I think we're seeing some of that movement going forward. Outside of that, there is no changes to this budget. We provided to you guys in our data report, and I'm going to refer back to that data report because we've given this to you guys every year since the creation of the Compliance Division. And everything that we have within our budget, whether it be IT, whether it be animal control, the nuisance department, the building department, it is not supported unless it has data to support the ask. And so I asked my staff to do that based on the quarterlies we get from Robin again. And then what we also do on the outside for the services provided to the community. When you look at the tickets, they had nineteen hundred and fifty tickets in response. And I have to tell you, I know there's other times that the staff is responding to situations that are coming up that are not in the ticket system, they're just moving them based on priority forward. So with that in mind, there are six full-time employees in that department that are delivering that service to every single one of the city employees, including you folks, and making sure that those services are being achieved and we're able to stay online. And I would stand for questions with IT.
Councilman Johnson. So going into your division overview, and you kind of tapped in on a little bit, especially the last part, where hardware affiliated connections and operations and hosting of various software applications. So granted, I'm not down here at City Hall except for like roughly around two to three times a month. And so, but last year, what I experienced when I was president, especially for like the last eight months of it, was nobody seemed to know down here who was responsible for the doors not locking. And so, you know, it could because it dealt with a horrible hardware issue with the locking mechanisms. I was down here waiting, you know, for the tech that, you know, tech that we had under contract to come down. And so we were just kind of fumbling around for who was responsible for an item like that. And then I know there's communications, you know, after the pandemic on regards to transparency. It was convenient to do the Facebook Live, you know, feeds and things like that, and the Zoom calls, you know, to open up that transparent market. But I've seen, you know, just when I'm at the council chambers, multiple department, including department heads, that when a software issue happens in the back quadrant, you know, you can just see the chaos, like we're up at the dais and we can just see people scrambling from all over different departments on who's actually responsible, you know, for these connections live when things drop offline and things like that. And we have what looks like a system failure. And so that's where I'm kind of looking at is, I think we need to kind of get it in order and establish some kind of flow chart of exactly who is responsible for taking things like when the doors won't lock and who's responsible for when we have a complete technical fail, failure in regards to our Zoom, our Facebook Lives, Youtubes and all that, when everything just goes down. Because it just seems like every other department but IT is responding to those issues.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Johnson, thank you, Councilman, for the thought process and then the question that came from that. And I think one of the key pieces that's really interesting here is that previous to COVID, the technology piece, in terms of being able to do these types of meetings, going Facebook Live, offering it through the Zoom experience, and then being able to have that remote opportunity did not exist. In fact, there was a different system in place where they used like a community television service where they put it out. It aired on Sundays or Wednesdays or whenever it was. And that was the technology that had served this council and this previous administrations for a great number of years. None of that belonged, though, to the city of Cheyenne. Those were pieces that belonged to the cable provider. And they were the ones that would put that information out. They were the ones that were responsible for the equipment. So kindly, they gave that to the city over a period of time, much like you've learned with the Dutcher ball fields and other things the city has acquired. But they needed a service model to go with them, and we weren't prepared for that. The pandemic had set a different type of conversation in terms of what kind of remote experiences, what kind of experiences do we want to offer out to the community to be able to participate in council meetings or any type of meeting that we would have at the city when we didn't have that platform for technology? There's a difference in acquiring that piece of technology, servicing that piece of technology, and then working through that. IT is not the programmer for that. Again, if we go out and we purchase the owl or we purchased the Zoom or we purchased, we will have some knowledge in that. But we're not audio visual. But we're not audio visual technicians in that conversation. If we take a look at the doors in a prime example, the doors have over time through evolution, taken on a new prospect of security and opportunity. But those doors were never designed for the type of security measures that were currently put into place. And so that causes a retrofrit to happen for something that probably wasn't poised or staged for that from the very beginning. So if we don't have the funds readily available, whether it be through public works or any other department, you're not able to make those great strides. And so I think what we've done over time is we have adapted as we've been able to financially do so. And we've also adapted based on community needs and what was put in front of them at the time for their request. So for IT, we don't manage the FOB in terms of getting those out to city employees. That's done through a different department. In terms of how the doors are put together and that network capability, that's managed again by a different department. And then there's another third party external player that provides a service to this facility and our other facilities. That's the security conversation in that component. And so there's a lot of different moving pieces. I think we're aware of it. We had a great conversation this morning with the directors. We're taking a look at citywide security and how that kind of works. We're looking at our doors. We're looking at those other opportunities. I think the mayor's well, uh, 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 he's in the conversation. He's well astute in the conversation. And I think that we are going to begin to move that forward, but you're a hundred percent correct. There is a lot of confusion in terms of who's responsible for what and how those pieces come together. And I think we'll be able to define that kind of going forward over the next couple of years because this technology didn't exist. In this type of operation for the city of Cheyenne. And so it's just kind of a new learning curve as we go forward in terms of who's going to be responsible. And then how we define those pieces going out. But IT, I believe one hundred percent would be behind wanting those things to be achievable. I can speak as the Director of Compliance saying, we want to make sure those things work and we want to make sure that when we're offering that service, that it is as close to flawless as it possibly could be.
Okay. And then just to follow up on another topic that you brought up. Have you seen improvement? Yeah, I know you brought up the tower in regards to fire, Botanic Gardens, Street and Alley. So. When, and like Vicki, when she spoke, you know, that she stated that, you know, she currently kind of operates over fifty, you know, city buildings. So have you guys seen improvement, you know, with improved technology that our response time, like say, because Street and Alley is so far away from City Hall where they're based. Have we seen improvement? Like if all of a sudden they get a call from Street and Alley that, you know, that their systems are down, that we're able to get back online in a quicker fashion. Cause I know in the, like previously, like we even pre pandemic, it was seemed like just to get somebody out there to get them online, you know, whether that required. Moving the filing cabinet away from the router or whatever, you know, that have you seen improvements? Uh, you know, amongst our network in response time to get offices that are not at City Hall back online.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Councilman Johnson, I hundred percent think that we have. I believe that with the fire that it's being laid within our community. The abilities for our staff to install towers and, and to get those waves working through in a much quicker trajectory. I, I one hundred percent am confident that our staff is being able to meet that. We're also relocating some of our facilities. And being able to have that connectivity between those facilities does speed that opportunity up. The one piece that's really unique again though, is that if within each department, if they will budget for that and they'll find ways to move their technology forward, that also helps as well. It can't just solely lie within the IT department to make decisions in terms of where are you down at? We, we, we wouldn't know. If you don't tell us, we don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a discovery process, if you will, sir.
Yeah. And so kind of going off of what Stephanie said and, and a question that was offered on continual training. Um, because of cyber security becoming such a prevalent thing, I know. Um, you know, sometimes I may get an email from Pete or the mayor that I know is a phishing scam. Have, do we? Um, I don't really, if you can say where in your budget where we do continual training to kind of keep everybody up to base on our. You know, cyber attacks, cybersecurity on exactly what provisions and if you're, because I don't really see it too much of an increase, you know, in regards to. Software improvements, licensing, you know, whether you're going to, you know, deal with those, you know, the, the, you know, like. The ransomware and other things that are coming through. I don't really see any increases. So how are we keeping our IT people up to? You know, up to current standards in regards to those types of attacks.
Sure. So our staff, Mr. Chairman, through you, our staff does a great job of participating with the Wyoming Association of Risk Management. And they are working currently on cybersecurity stuff every single day. And so our IT department, they serve on those committees, they work with that board, they have a contract as well that we have to go through and answer. It's very vigorous with a ton of questions. In terms of how do you guys have your security set up? Do you have multi authentic, multi factor authentication? Do you have those pieces of security in place? And, and we are working towards that and we answer that questionnaire every single year. If I'm pretty confident, if you were to look for it, you would find most of that's paid for within the maintenance line and the network development line. But I can have our IT department break that specifically down. If you'd like to know exactly what we've spent on cybersecurity, we'd be happy to provide that to you folks.
Okay. So now that you brought up that specific line, it looks like you're actually decreasing that line by almost fifty or fifty two thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. So.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was one time money that we had requested in order to bring the fire stations and some other larger projects on. Uh, into the IT world and bringing them into the city of Cheyenne.
So that you're right, you covered that part. So pretty much we're going back to, it looks like our twenty three actuals were thirty four thousand. So you're estimating forty grand. So. Pretty much because of the fire stations and everything. So I guess in preparation for our next six penny, you know, with additional. Facilities that might be coming online, is that something that you guys are getting in preparation, you know, for additional structures that could come online that we may see? Or where our funding mechanisms for those one time purchases are going to come when we start constructing new fire stations, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Councilman Johnson, crystal ball is a hundred percent correct. Yes, exactly what we're doing, sir.
Okay. So I guess going into the legislative question, um, is that what, do we already have the functionality to take on? Um, the arboretum in regards to their connectivity, if that was to come online, because that's a remote and a different direction.
I'm confident to say my staff could absolutely deliver that. I think there would be some requests that are going to have to be funded in order to do that. Um, but we know that's a council goal and we're one hundred percent behind doing that. So as that we get closer to that opportunity, yes, we'll be willing to do that.
Yeah. Anyone else on the dais have a question? Or Councilman White? On IT? Director Fountain and then our portables. We talked. Earlier when some of the other departments about the ability to talk with police, emergency. Uh, management and nine one one calls. So like when we had the big snowstorm apocalypse, whatever they called it. For a ambulance to get to a residence. To respond to a nine one one call, are we seeing some more development with the Wiilink? Is it that, are we in that system?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, I'm not really in the loop of the Wiilink conversation. I do know that. Our department, uh, the IT department does work on ensuring that, you know, we are able to receive the communications. We are keeping our lines open. Uh, during those types of things and we have a redundant process in place to make sure that doesn't go down. Um, but as far as what you're speaking to, I, I wouldn't have any information on it, sir.
Okay. Now, with Councilman Roy Blon and I attended the emergency management workshop last, earlier this week. And they had mentioned that there were some communication breakdowns during that event. So. Uh, we just want to make sure that we don't repeat those mistakes.
Understood.
Going forward then. Animal control?
Yeah, we can take a look at animal control. So again, you know, we provide you with a data report and I'll refer back to that each and every time. Within the budget book, please turn to page one twelve and one thirteen so that we can go through that in, in actual time. Most of what you see within this budget is a, a decrease with the exception of one new officer. And with any time you add an employee. Comes the resources for that employee to provide that service to the community. So most often for the animal control, it's going to require a vehicle. It requires us to have uniforms, the NACA training, and, and so we look at the National Animal Control Certification. It's not, so if you'll see that line item where it says professional development, that three thousand dollars isn't for one NACA exam. It gives us, I believe, uh, six opportunities to have an officer come in. The ironic thing is if you look at one NACA certification, it almost costs as much as it does to purchase the six. So we purchased the six at one time and that we have it if we have any turnover or if we add an officer like we're trying to do at this point in time. What we've done in this particular situation is that we know that our, uh, field officer is going to be leaving the city of Cheyenne. Her and her partner have, uh, he's joined the United States Air Force. He's going to be getting stationed elsewhere and she's going to be joining him here shortly. Unfortunately, it happens during our busiest times. So her departure is sometime between June and September. And so we want to make sure that we don't find ourselves like we did last year when we had a staff member choose to leave. We only operate with four officers. So when you go down one. That leaves it to our department to backfill that. And we use our nuisance guys to do that. We use our, our readiness team to do that. Our safety department and myself is the backfill to help out with the animal control. So that's why we have under request, uh, for an additional employee so that we can ensure that we don't have a lapse in service. And that we can continue to support that service line as we have done successfully for the last couple of years. Um, if you also look that the rest of this, again, the communication line item goes up thirty eight hundred dollars. That's because you have a tablet, a computer, a wireless network in the truck and a phone. Um, we have the same thing, our maintenance and labor, it went up. But I, I want to share with you that I had an opportunity yesterday to go before the county commissioners. And within these increases that we have, because we've seen that we had a fuel parts and labor decrease of ten thousand, but everything else had an increase. I asked the county commissioners for an additional twenty six thousand dollars. That was to cover our body cams. Um, to help with this additional staffing and to cover the cost and rise of expenses. And they're in the beginning stages of their budget, but we went through the first one and they approved it at this point. So that will be an additional assistance in operating the animal control. And we feel very confident that the city county relationship, um, that has been strong for us. As well as working with the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. We're seeing some great strides there and those opportunities. I think we have found the controls niche. Um, and, and then within the staff that we currently have, they're delivering the service model to the community that we're trying to, uh, to achieve.
Questions?
Councilman Johnson. So, um, I, when Patrick and I went to, um, the last, uh, regional WHAM conference. Um, we knew that our resolution on the animal district was, uh, delivered to WHAM. So, um, if you, I, the mayor will probably alert you if anything fails at June eighth, when they have the WHAM conference. When they present the resolutions on the animal district. So if you can, hopefully if he hasn't already asked, if you can kind of just put a cheat sheet for him for WHAM. And then if it gets through WHAM, um, and this goes, um, starts going through the process with the legislature. Um, because the animal district does, you know, obviously benefit your agency as well as sheltering, you know, as well as control. And, um, so if you can, um, at the mayor's request, when, if you guys can kind of get him up to snuff when he has to go in front of the legislature. So we explain exactly what we're trying to accomplish with the animal district. So I wanted you to know that that conversation is still rolling. I know you spoke in support of it when we did it, but last August, but it's still moving forward. So if you can, and your staff can provide him as much. Data as he requests to make sure that this can pass through the legislature.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you. Yes, absolutely. We'll do that, sir.
Councilman Rebel.
Eric, um, the animal control officers do issue tickets, right?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Yes, they do, sir.
You know what kind of, or do you know what income is generated through that?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, just like with the police department. The goal of the animal control is not to generate revenue. The goal of the animal control is to get people to come into compliance. We don't track the citations in terms of the revenues that would be generated if a citation was to go through full opportunity being from the time of issuance. Until the time that the bond is actually paid or the fine is actually paid. We don't track that in our department. What we do is try to participate in the thought process of public health, welfare and safety and be an external deterrent. So that people don't violate the municipal code in terms of how they care for their animals or if they're in the park, are they picking up the fecal matter? Are they on a, on a leash, et cetera? But I personally, in my department, the way I view it, it's not my job to be concerned with the bond schedules in terms of the monies and revenues collected. From the animal control is to ensure the public health, welfare and safety. We want to make sure at the end of the day, that's our number one. How do we educate? How do we participate in the community with external partners? And how do we get people to be in compliance? If there is revenues that are generated from that, I would look to the treasurer to answer that, but we just simply don't track that.
Okay. But do you track the citation? So if you issue Pete a citation for his cat being out.
Oh, no.
So, and Pete, uh, Pete puts it in the, in the garbage can and just leaves it there. So two weeks from now or a month from now or a year from now. Pete's cat is a, is a multi, multiple offender. Do we track that? Does Pete go to jail? Does the cat go to jail?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, we'll take them both. But no, uh, uh, yes, sir. We, we actually do track. We, we do track it. Our citations go into. Uh, the tracking system, just like, like a police department opportunity. We know every single person who has an outstanding ticket. We know if they have paid their tickets or haven't paid them. Um, we do know that, but we don't track the actual dollar amount of each one of those citations. We think that's a little bit inappropriate. But we're trying to be an external deterrent.
I think it's actually in violation of Ferguson on most of that stuff anyways.
Correct. Yes, sir. That's correct.
Uh, Director, so last year during Fridays on the Plaza, we had a couple, uh, dogfights. Right around little children. So I don't know if you and Director Sanchez want to talk at all about. Whether or not dogs should be allowed on Fridays on the Plaza. But that was one of those disasters that was. Barely averted because we did have police on hand there. I know the, the signage or what we would have to do to do that. And I'm a dog person, but I don't know. There's, there's times when those two things don't really mix.
Mr. Chairman, to, to respond to that thought processor. Um, I believe Mr. Sanchez and, and the CRE team do a great job of trying to educate the public as to why we don't allow animals on the plaza, specifically dogs on Fridays on the plaza. Or anytime on the plaza. Um, but with anything, it's, it's the same that we have to go through with like our parks, you know, our North Cheyenne Soccer Park. We do field a number of calls and quite a few of them where people are saying, hey, there's dogs that are loose. The problem is until we get there with two officers on duty. By the time you get an officer deployed out there, most of the time those people are gone. With the plaza opportunity, staff, um, from CRE does ask those folks to take their animals off. I know the police department's also done a great job at that as well. Um, we'd be happy to provide an officer on Fridays on the plaza down there as well. But again, there's only two officers on a call. Um, and so if you put one specifically to Friday on the plaza, we might have a shortfall, but I echo your concerns and we'll be mindful of that as well.
Yeah. I mean, just to follow up, I mean, once the city and the, the community get the notice of what our intentions are with, uh. Animals or just dogs on the plaza, you know, I think then, uh, they'll back off a little bit more, but it, it was getting out of hand last year. So. Maybe might have to for the first three or four shows this year, have, uh, one of those animal control officers letting people know, you know, you can't. Bring your dog on the plaza. You have to take the dog home and then next time they'll remember. Cause they'll miss the show, right? They gotta take the dog home. So.
Yeah, you don't want to miss those shows. It's a great lineup this year. So understood, sir.
Yeah. Councilman White? You have any questions for animal control? There's our IT.
Not at this time, thanks. And I'm having some connectivity issues. So I apologize if, um. If I go out, apologize.
Yeah, Director, let's go forward then.
All right. So we're going to move right on along. Let's take a look at page, uh, one hundred and six through page one hundred and nine. And that is going to cover the building department, the nuisance department and the risk department.
Okay.
So again, uh, providing and going back to the data report that was sent to you, um, a little over four weeks ago. Um, we believe that everything that we bring forward today, um, within this ask is, uh, based on need and supported. Um, by this council based on what the council has set as goals and also what has been brought to our attention. Um, both through constituency as well as through our own, uh, potential, um, operations, if you will. Um, you will see increase in many of these lines in terms of staffing and salaries. Uh, primarily we have the three percent. We also have the step in grade that's in there. And then we also have. And then we also have new positions that were brought on. I want to talk a little bit about the building department and some of the questions. So I was asked about three months ago, we've seen a decrease in residential permits, single family residential permits. And explain that, that it is not unusual based on the cost of goods and having conversation with some of the local builders as well as interest rates that are kind of, kind of controlling that market, if you will. But if you pay close attention to the budget and you really look at it, you see that there is a huge uptick in commercial development within this community and then also multifamily residential units as well. And so that drives those building numbers. It also drives the need and the request for additional inspectors. These projects are significant in size and standard, and we're confident within our delivery that we can do that. We have a very, very competent building official who has experience in developing and looking at the plans review for these data centers and commercial opportunities. And so we're very fortunate to be in the position that we're in. He's also done a great job in creating the mentorship program internally with our new inspectors that have come on board based on where they're at within their licenser and based on where they're at with their experiences. We're fortunate because we have a period where we have experience. And now we're bringing in the opportunity to grow that experience for future generations and administrations and types of development within the community. Tono is doing a phenomenal job in that. And I often, I say it all the time in that I was given divisions that were challenges and truly inside of those challenges were aces. I hold a handful of aces within every single one of my divisions. I'm fortunate in risk management. I'm fortunate in building. I'm fortunate in animal control and IT. And it's just a blessing to be able to have such talent on my team that helps me deliver these types of numbers, consistent numbers each and every year. So the only time you see those kind of requests are when we have growth in our community. And we were at a point where we needed that support. The other piece of this that's unique and different is that we don't have one person just doing plans review anymore. We're looking at the entire team and assigning pieces to those individuals that have those skill sets and experiences to be able to assist in that plan review. So we've been able to meet our deadlines. In fact, I had a meeting with Tono and the last couple of them, we've been early in our delivery for the large projects. And that's exactly where we want to be as the building department. There is still confusion in our community in terms of the other players that are involved in building. And, you know, because we have to go through fire, we have to go through engineering, we have public works involved. All the other departments in the city are involved. We're not the Lone Ranger sometimes that does slow a process. But what we want to ensure though is that we build a quality project within our community. And I've heard this council echo that before in that it's not about how many, it's about the quality that we build. And I think we've done a great job of that. So that is where the largest contributions come through in this. You do see the dues and subscriptions. We did have a decrease of eight thousand dollars. But that's because our guys had to have new books. We got all those books in our last cycle. And we've bought some digital opportunities, so that helped lessen that request as well. If you look at the two thousand dollars increase for our training, that is because of the new staff that's coming on board. And we want to make sure that everybody goes to those annual conferences, those annual trainings, and they keep those certifications. They also grow their branch of certifications so that we continue that type of continued growth with them. Within this nuisance request, we are asking for two full-time vagrancy officers. What we are challenged with and what we are finding is that it takes a significant amount of time dealing with the displaced people in our community. And it's not just a matter of figuring out where they're at. We provided that within the data report showing you that some of the conversation in the past has been whack-a-mole. I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding. It is somewhat of whack-a-mole, but truly we've defined where they're at. We know where they're at. So we're trying to provide those folks, those opportunities to work with Kameha, to work with Welcome Mat, to work with Salvation Army, to work with the hospital, to get the services that they need. We're not talking about a homeless displaced individual. Those we can define. It's the transient population that is the whack-a-mole conversation. They're not familiar with the community. They're not long-term opportunities that have been here for them. And so they don't really understand all the requirements. We've done a great job of implementing the no camping ordinance and getting those folks to move along to keep our greenways and our, our park properties free of vagrancy as much as we possibly can. I'm very confident and I felt very good about where we stand today in terms of where we're at with that vagrancy. But by no means is it perfect. By no means are we vagrant free. And I've said before in the previous year's budget, you won't be. You'll, you will always have a certain number of displaced individuals that reside and transit through your community. But we need these people to keep these areas cleaned up. One of the hardest things to overcome is when you look at hiring staff for these types of opportunities is this is not your normal nuisance abatement. This is not going in and taking care of weeds and grass and garbage and abandoned tires and furniture. This is dealing with human fecal matter. There is drug paraphernalia. There are a number of health and safety issues and concerns that I have as a director in working with our staff to ensure that we're getting these cleaned up. Because the last thing we want is a child in our community to come in contact with anything like this. The last thing we want in our community is to contaminate our creek areas because we're not maintaining those opportunities. And I think we're doing a really good job of that, but it takes more than one person. The other thought process is that we are probably putting ourself in a situation that could be a little bit contentious. When you swing one officer out to clean up an area, they're independent of themselves. There is no backup. There is no support. So they have to rely on their cellphone. They have to rely on that hopefully when they arrive there, there's nobody there. We cleaned up a site a few weeks ago and we arrived on scene and we believed that nobody was there. They were actually asleep under the tarp and there was a bunch of clothes and garbage on top of the tarp. We had no idea the individuals were there. So now we have to get those individuals to understand that it was posted within twenty-four hours. They need to get their area cleaned up and we need them to get back into the surfaces that are provided within the community. But that leaves behind a big mess and we have to clean that mess up. And my concerns are that when you look at the staffing, we're utilizing our nuisance officers, of which if you look at the data report, they're already at capacity in terms of the number of cases that we are opening and trying to deliver services on each and every day. Then you take a look at the larger cleanups that we're having to do. An average large cleanup takes forty-five days. It's not in the posting. It's not in the simple going out and sending the letters. It's the coordination between the other departments, getting day labor folks in there, truly understanding what we're going into. If we network with the police department who's been super supportive, they give us the assistance that we need. But sometimes we find that there's nefarious behavior there or there's criminal nature there. And we have to rely on them to be there as well to take care of those situations. So this is a much more complex conversation than just hiring bodies to come in and help us out. But we are at the point where the data already shows the nuisance officers are one hundred percent at their capacity. And if we don't want that to slide, of which I think we've, we've all committed to that. We've all seen what that staffing level does for us. We must have that support. In having that conversation with the mayor, he has been one hundred percent in support and understanding that we want to continue to provide those services to the community. We want to make sure we're keeping our parks and greenways free and clear. And we want to make sure that we're able to continue to assist our constituency from not having these folks live in their alleys or on their front yards. And so I think that we've really been able to capture that and that's why we have the request of those two. In the part-time person, we've been asked by other departments and other divisions within the city to assist them in terms of issuing citations, in terms of educating the public. A good example is the city clerk's office. She is a primarily all-female staff. And their staffing really doesn't afford to have a field officer out trying to work with the public when they are not in compliance and operating things such as a tattoo shop or a massage parlor, or maybe they're running another business that they don't have a license for. They do their due diligence in sending the letter. They do their due diligence and, and reaching out and trying to have conversation. But sometimes they come short of that. There's a shortfall there and they rely on another entity to issue citation. And so that would be one example of a department that we would assist in issuing citation on their behalf once they give us the appropriate documentation to show they had done everything they could up to that point to enforce that portion of the code. Another piece is the engineer's office. So we had a situation where there was a local business that had a grease failure, that grease got into the drainage. And there should have been a citation issued, but they don't have the, the capabilities to do that. They don't, they don't even know where to begin in that process. And so this officer would handle those types of situations as well. The other piece is if you look at the building department, the chief building official doesn't issue citation. He issues notice, but this compliance officer would then issue the citation on the multiple offense. So if we went out and the same thing for our nuisance officers, if we had gone out and given a service multiple times to the community, we would issue citation at that point in time. And so we are hopeful that this part-time position, if funded, would give us that capability to provide that service back to my partners within the city, in other departments, in achieving the ability to get them to come into compliance. Again, citations are hopeful in that they become an external deterrent. They're not a revenue. So if anybody says this is about revenue, it's not. It's about living within one city, one standard and having that capability to deliver as we go forward. The last piece that was approached just recently, and I, I was very honest, we'd be happy to help the police department with it. But the parking and having an issue with not having a method for a person who would like to contest their ticket. And they really would like to see if that part-time person couldn't assist in that as well. I don't know what the capacity of this person would look like. I think it's a huge ask of this individual. But I think what we're identifying is we have done a very good job of, of looking at the codes and looking at what we're expecting to enforce as a community and asking the people that live within the city to do. Now we need the person to help enforce that final piece. And so that's our request for the two and a half positions, the two representing the vagrancy, the one representing the city code officer, if you will, and then drive that piece forward. Outside of that, you will look at the budget and you don't see any new requests. We're not asking for anything magnificent. We're asking for the needs to operate those positions and to offer those services. And I would stand for a question.
So last year in the budget, second or third reading where council had that extra money, that's where the council moved it into your budget last year, right?
Mr. Chairman, to answer the question, I believe what, what happened there was there was a conversation with the planning department in terms of having a zoning officer and having that zoning officer go out and be the one that looks at the trees, looks at the carports, looking at the setbacks, seeing if people are in violation of their site plan as presented at the time to the planning department. And they wanted to have a code enforcement officer enforce that piece. That is exactly what was presented. And then what happened during the budget process was yes, you approved that. You put that person in there and we utilize that person not only as the zoning officer, but they're also a nuisance officer and they also serve as a vagrancy officer. So they're servicing in three capacities and they're doing that now. But again, you're, you're spreading that one position very thin because if the goal is to enforce the pieces that you've seen in the previous year's budget, that one person would do that full-time and they would never get to the other things. So within the department, we have to prioritize. Some days I have to come in and I have to backfill. I have to be an animal control officer. Some days Marilyn comes in and she's not the deputy. She has to be the city risk administrator. Some days she has to come in and back up the nuisance team. All of our people, again, we're talking thirty-three strong, have to network across the lines. And it's not just thirty-three. We are very fortunate to have the entire city of Cheyenne behind us. We can reach out to the police department. We can reach out to the fire department. We can reach out to the sanitation department. That's how I look at us. We are just thirty-three, and I'm one of those thirty-three that are part of the larger opportunity to serve the compliance and the constituents, take care of the constituency and the obligations of city code.
Okay, Chief Francisco had expressed some frustration with the county and the, the new tow lot or abandoned vehicle lot. And I see you have some extra money in here to deal with those compliance issues on that.
So, Mr. Chairman through you, the, the money you see within the budget, the twenty thousand dollars was what we put into the line for the vehicles based on the ordinance that we had passed from this council in that if the vehicle was on their property, we did not, we did not have the resources or the places to store those vehicles. We had to seek out a third party to move those vehicles. And so we went out for RFP. We selected three parties that would help us out with that and they have a lot. They will tow those vehicles to their lot. They will hold them at their lot. If somebody reclaims them, they come here to pay their fees. We give them the correct documentation to go to those lots and retrieve their vehicles and get them back. If they don't, after the period of time expires, they become that lot's property. And it's up to them to do the title work, them to store them and for them to dispose of them as they see fit. It is not ours any longer on that particular conversation. I was in a meeting this morning. I've had concerns. I've heard from the police department. I've heard from the fire department that there is nowhere to store vehicles because the county lot is full. We had an opportunity with a local builder who was going to install the fence as part of an agreement on another piece that we had worked on, piece of property had worked on here in Cheyenne. He would take that fence down and he would assist in getting that installed. I don't know if that's the holdup or not. I've heard two different variables. One variable being the county has looked at the technology, the obligation of dual security out there. And that is taking a little bit longer to get it done. But if it's the fence side, we have our fence laying out there. We're ready to install. I believe what we're going to have to do now though is pay to have it installed as that particular contractor is, is my understanding is no longer in business or doing business within the community. So we're left holding a fence that needs to be installed. But I have for a long period of time, and I think the police department and myself have all felt that there will come a time if we can't make this opportunity work, where we may have to have our own lot. We were at a warm board meeting just a couple of weeks ago and we heard from another community within the pool that said they've had to get their own lot and they've had to go as far as getting their own tow trucks. So we're not unique in our situation, but we are unique within the complication that we have before us today.
Questions? Councilman Leiborn?
I think this is more of a comment, working with that camping ordinance and the extreme difficulties in dealing with those camps and the long-term effort here. I really believe that this additional officers is totally justified. Sometimes, as in the case of this matter, things just spiral and it's really difficult to patch that in. So I think that, I hope that this will help and that we can do that because it just seems like there's more and more difficulty in nuisance across the board. And then you have some of these camps and I appreciate the point here that really needs to be made. What we're trying to do is in the hideouts, where it's out of sight, out of mind and just totally spirals out of control, extremely difficult to deal with, has effects nearby that might not affect everyone. But I really appreciate my interactions with this office and all that, that this office has done. And certainly, when you look at all that you've absorbed over the years, it's interesting, very interesting how that all worked out. But before we leave here, I did want to say how much I appreciate this whole process. This, this book, the way we've, that this has been managed. And it really is, at least for me, it's interesting to hear what the other council people see and understand. So now we'll take this budget and put it to work. And I, having been through this many times, in many occasions, this is part of a steps that we're taking to move this city upward and into what the contemporary city that people expect. So I want to thank everybody involved. It was really well-handled and certainly I look forward to working with your office on some of these extremely difficult issues. And so thanks to all.
Sediments as well. You know, maybe because you only had half the councils here today. Going to have more questions come committee the whole. But yeah, great job, everybody involved. Give somewhere note. Got Councilman White still?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President through you. Eric, I apologize if I missed it. But how many code enforcement officers do you currently? Um, Eric, I apologize if I missed it, but how many code enforcement officers do you currently have on staff? I know you have a budget request for two addition, two and a half additional ones. I'm just, uh, uh, wondering how, how many you currently have.
Mr. Chairman through you to Councilman White. Uh, Councilman, there are three, but one of them serves as the zoning officer currently. The other two are your nuisance officers for all three wards. There's nobody servicing in the vagrancy and nobody servicing in, uh, community cleanup. So it is a total of three for all that we serve, sir.
Thank you. And I just, uh, before we conclude today, I just want to echo, uh, Pete's comments. I think your staff has done an amazing job. And just for, uh, my colleagues, you know, I remember talking to Carter Napier, the city manager in Casper, uh, before, uh, Mayor Collins administration. And at that time, Casper had about four or five code enforcement officers. That was, that was like four or five years ago. So, um, this, this, uh, our compliance staff has been undermanned for quite some time. Lots of things have happened over the past several years that have, uh, necessitated the need for, for more staff. And so I think, uh, the budget request here is completely justified as well. No further, uh, questions, Mr. President.
Any final remarks, Director?
Mr. Chairman, just again, thank you and echoing, uh, the support, we really appreciate it. Uh, we look forward to working as an administration going forward again. And we also look forward to, uh, the challenges that come forward as we begin to look at what's coming around the corner at us for next year.
Absolutely. Uh, going forward to my colleagues, when we start looking at things in the budget, um, our uh, council word contingency money, we're starting to use it and it seems like most of it is being used in some compliance issues. Uh, twenty thousand dollars just doesn't seem to, uh, go as far as it used to, that's for sure. So we might, uh, start having some discussions about whether or not we want to add to that. We originally started with sixty thousand in each word last year and it got reduced in, uh, second reading. So, uh, with that, think about it. We'll see you all next Wednesday for committee of the whole and we are adjourned.